I'll call the meeting to order and one of the things you'll notice is I found how to crank up the sound in here. I cranked it way up. So we might get some feedback at some point in the meeting, but it should be good and loud.
Right on.
Good. I'll start with a motion to adopt the agenda.
I will move.
All right, thank you.
It's been awhile.
All right, and then we need to, before we approve that and go through, is just which items the council want to debate tonight. And I'll start over with Councillor Denak on my right this time. Oh geez, thank you. I'm jumping ahead, I forgot to do our acknowledgement. Yeah, so, "Council in the spirit of reconciliation wants to acknowledge that we're in the homelands of many of the diverse First Nations and many people whose ancestors have walked this land since time immemorial. We are grateful to work, live, and learn on the traditional lands of Treaty VIII." Thank you for catching that for me. All right, so Councillor Denak, is there any items that you wish to discuss?
8.1 and 8.3.
All right. Okay, anyone going around?
I had the same.
The same ones?
The same ones, yeah.
Okay. Councillor Weigl?
Uh, basically nothing. Yeah.
Okay. Councillor, anyone else?
I want to add 8.2.
Okay. Councillor Dunn?
Yeah, that's all for now.
Okay. And Councillor Martins?
Sorry, I was gonna say, we should talk to the RCP quarterly reports since we do have a representative.
So I do have 8.2, 8.3, 14.3. I know, I wasn't sure if we were just receiving that from information or if there was an action item there.
Okay, so we got it.
I had it highlighted.
So we can talk about that, 14.3, 14.1, and we wanted to, I wanted to add the CAO's report and action list, 13.1. Okay, so, the items that we are not going to talk about, our debate is 5.1. Just going through to make sure I don't forget anything. We've got 14.2. So it's those two that we're not going to be debating on. So can we get a motion to adopt the agenda without those two items? Oh, we got the motion, sorry. All in favor? Carry. All right, I still haven't got that all down pat of adding that section in there. And now we'll move on to our scheduled delegations, and I know we have the Pregnancy Care Centre, Bonnie. Bonnie, when you come up, there's a little button there that we'll all be able to hear you very loud and clear once you press that.
It slipped away on my chair.
Yeah. So I'll turn it over to you? Oh.
I just turned it off. So I've got a lot of papers to do.
Okay, I'll turn it back on.
We're gonna turn it down a bit, obviously. Rod will turn it down, you can get started.
Okay, well, I sent an email off and you photocopied the brochure so that you all can see the brochure. I didn't bring the proper brochure. If you want them, instead of having this paper copy, I can get it to you. This pregnancy, I'm just starting up with it. Like, it's just a whole brand-new ballgame. Like, there's a lot to do. I've only been approached by two people that want to help me with it. It's mainly, I need a building eventually, once I get lots of people coming in. I need workers to work with me, like, for reception. I'll need councillors to talk one-on-one with the clients. We'll need money, of course, right up front, plus donations all the time. Like, it's run on donations, and it has to be a registered centre in order to do the taxes and whatever. We have to be, it has to be a... I have to send in a notice of intent to register the centre once I get my people around and the name of the Pregnancy Centre. I don't know if we want to go with High Prairie Pregnance Care Centre or what we're gonna do, but, yeah, it's just all mainly in the ballgame here. I have sent some emails out to different churches of the area because it is, this Pregnancy Care Centre is a Christian organisation, run by Christian people. But we need not only Christian people in the centre, but we need non-Christian too to be a part of the programme, to be in the centre. And I feel we need a Pregnancy Care Centre here. There is a lot of young people that are dealing with this issue. And, like, High Prairie reaches further than just the town of High Prairie. I have went all the way to McLennan, Donley, I went as far east as Slay Lake, I went as far south as Valaville, as far north as Peace River, just to make High Prairie the centre of, the centre. Because a lot of people travel in, and we would get a lot of people traveling in. And then, like, all the native people from the reserves around will have access to this, and we can do a lot of reaching the unreachable people that cannot be reached because they feel that they have to have an abortion, they don't have any other alternative. And the centre will not downgrade anybody's, any of the clients' thoughts on abortion or adoptions or whatever they feel. The councillors are there to work with the clients and to get them on the right track and feel that they have support and not out there all by themselves. And it's not only for women. Like, males are welcome to come too because they're part of the pregnancy issue too. So that's mainly all I have to say. I do have surveys here that need to be filled out eventually. I'm not too familiar with what the community is all about because I don't live in High Prairie, in the town of High Prairie. I live out on the outskirts. And so I don't know if one of you people can take on my community survey package and fill it out for me so that I have an idea? Or I'll have to wait till I get more people underneath me so that we can get this community survey filled out to see if it's, if High Prairie area is a good place to have a Pregnancy Care Centre.
Okay, thank you very much. I'm just sort of wondering what your ask is of our town council. I get the concept of what you're trying to do, but I'm just trying, what can we do? Or what are you hoping that the town can do for you?
Well, just to go word of mouth, let people know that I'm the head person working at this. You people see more people than I do. I don't come to town very often, maybe two times a week. And so, yeah, I need a lot of help. And, you know, word of mouth goes a lot, yeah, that's...
Okay, so you're asking, just so I'm clear?
Yeah, I don't really know.
You want us to spread the word?
Yeah, spread the word.
And if we know people that might be interested in this, to contact you?
And contact me, and then we can get together in a building and discuss further of what the next steps are to take.
I don't see, like, I see the 1-800 number on the brochure or the pamphlet.
Yeah, no, I do have my own personal information, yeah, I didn't...
Is there an email?
I do have an email, yeah. My email is bonnienewfeld, My cell number is 780-507-0548. My address.
No, it's just, like, if that's what you want, we have to have a way to direct them to you.
For sure, yeah. I do have another paper here. I don't know if you people would want it. I only printed off maybe five copies. I didn't know how many to print off. But ways for volunteers to serve. I don't know if you want that to print off and hand out to people or just this...
Yeah, you could leave it with, Rod will get it from you, and then we'll...
Yeah, there's five copies there. There's two pages.
Can we put this on our webpage and, just so it's there in case people are curious, they can, you know, go to the webpage and see it?
Yes, please.
Yeah.
Yes, please. Do any kind of advertising you can for it, please.
Questions from around the rest of the council? I know Councillor Weigl's got one.
Bonnie, what does this offer that FCSS and the Children's Reserves Centre does not? What's the difference? I'm just curious.
The difference is that CRC does not offer salvation for souls. Where Pregnancy Care Centre, their main idea is to bring salvation to their souls if they are not a believer in Jesus. That's the main idea. Because it is a Christian organisation.
And what sort of, I guess, spread the word costs? Like, what's, do you have an idea what that's gonna cost?
I have the annual fee for a registered, non-affiliated, whenever I get a chance to send this notice of intent to register the centre to become an affiliated with Pregnancy Care Canada, is $500 annual. And then there are conferences that they have. There is one that's coming up April 26th to 28th of this year in Edmonton, which costs $500 plus room at a hotel to stay. So there are those costs right now. I don't have any other costs in, at the moment because, like I said, I'm just starting. I've only been at this for about a month and it hasn't been very good. Because I've been trying to do it all by myself. But, yeah, those are the only two figures I have at the moment. $500 to register it and $500 for me to go to the conference plus money for the room, which would probably be another $500.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll call the Councillor Dunn and the Councillor Stenhouse.
Bonnie, have you applied for charitable donation status?
I have not.
Okay. And secondly, what's the need for the survey and what timeline do you have to complete it?
Okay, the timeline, well, timeline would probably be a week. I don't know. It's... It's a lot of paper. It has to do with abortion clinic referral services, pro-life organisation. Let's see, what else? Churches, of course. Children's services.
So just a general idea?
Social systems, yeah. Doctors, high school, college, university. Childbirth education classes and other services. So that's mainly, mainly it's... And, yeah, so, like, it would probably take more than a week. Like, I don't know how long it would take to get this done, yeah.
Go ahead.
So who will use staff on this? Is this gonna be, are you going to have registered trained therapists? Or is this just a complete volunteer?
No, there's gonna be registered. There's gonna be, yeah, top brass people for sure. Yeah, that will need to be paid, yeah. So I, like, the money is also ongoing to pay the wages of the non-volunteers, yes.
So is prenatal care or anything like this included in this?
I haven't looked at that yet, yeah.
Just so I'm clear again, you have a survey that you want council to fill out, is that...
Well, if you want to. If not, then, once I get more people under me, then that group will take on these surveys that I have. Because that's mainly what it says in my manual, that the group of people, once they fill out their survey to find out if they're eligible to be on board too, then they take on these different surveys. But I wanted to get the ball rolling faster, and I thought maybe town council or, like, if not, that's fine too, could take it on and go run, be my legs for me and run around and, because you know more about it than I do, but I can look into it. Like, it's not a big deal. It was just a thought.
Okay. Okay.
Any other questions?
Anything else? No? I see not more. So thank you for coming in and...
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Good luck with your adventure. That sounds like a lot of work ahead for you. Yeah.
Have a good evening?
Yes.
Stay warm. Yeah.
It'll be a scheduled delegation.
No, Chris, let's knock on some real wood.
All right, and then, so with that done, we'll move on to, I know we have another delegation with our commander, so come on up. And we all have the information in our package, so we'll go with that.
Thanks again for having me. Yeah, so, yeah, I was just invited to come out and kind of field some questions on the quarterly reports, if anybody had any. Or fire any other question I have you on. I'm good.
All right, well, and maybe for the rest of the council, I'm gonna just start with the first one that's on the dog that we were just discussing beforehand. Maybe you can fill in the rest of the council so they are aware, because...
Yeah, so, yeah, you asked me about the dog man, and we have currently, our current dog man has been transferred. I'm not sure where he went or that kind of, they don't tell me anything. And my understanding is we will be getting another dog and dog handler back in the area. That being said, I'm gonna make a call tomorrow or the next day, talk to district commanders and just find out for sure, get something, you know, concrete. But to the best of my knowledge, I had said, one dog handler phoned me looking to move it to Peace River. I said, "Well, that's not a great idea." He phoned me back an hour later and said, "Nope, I was wrong. Looks like you're keeping your dog." So the last I heard is we will be getting another handler and another dog for our area, so...
Okay, thank you for that. Now, let's just throw it open to council for more questions. Councillor Martins?
Well, good to see you again, Staff Sergeant Charzwell. Now you're an old hand.
Yeah, I know, right?
Yeah, you're entrenched. Hey, great staffs, thank you for the quarterly report. So I understand person crime, I understand property crime. What's other criminal code? What falls in that category?
Other criminal code? It's gonna be more your frauds, those kind of files. Good Lord, put me on the spot already, eh?
So that's the only, that's the only area where we've seen an increase, correct?
It is. Well, October to December, there was a decrease. January to December, yeah, there was a slight increase over the last year. So I can get to exactly what others are.
More in terms of, is there something we need to be vigilant about or is there anything proactive?
I don't think so. Like, all the numbers, they're trending post-COVID, is my opinion. We, 2020 had hit, property crimes, you know, were down. That makes sense. Everybody's at home. I tell everybody the last thing a bad guy wants is to knock on your door and somebody to answer it or to break in your window and someone to be home, you know. 2020, everybody stayed home. 2021, got a little looser. We got, you know, the summer of freedom, let's all go. You know, and I am almost confident if you were to look over the summer last year, you would have seen an increase. That's where our increase would have been. Because then, of course, restrictions came in again. But I'd looked at the stats and we are trending to, our numbers right now are trending to the 2019s, 2018s. So I do believe that COVID had a massive impact on it. The one that surprises me, and you may think this is weird, well, I shouldn't say that, is in 2020, person crimes were at 169. So when you're locked down and you're stuck with your significant other long enough, people get angry and stuff happens. We got a little bit of freedom last year, and then we saw them dip off again. So that one, to me, my biggest, I guess, out of all these numbers, mine is the persons crimes. You know, property crimes, I'm that theory, it's materialistic, you know. You can only do so much with your truck. If they're gonna steal your truck, they're gonna steal your truck. I wish they'd just ask me for the keys. I'll give them the keys, take my truck, see you later. It's the person crimes that I really want to get a handle on and that kind of thing. So I see, I see good things. We're down 16% over the entire year from 2020, but there again, there were some anomalies with the pandemic and stuff that I think contributed to that, so, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Now, is this just for High Prairie? This isn't for the Big Leagues region. This is just High Prairie?
This is the High Prairie detachment area.
Oh, okay.
So it's gonna encompass the entire, the entire FOST and us and all the outlying areas. So it's an overview of our detachment area, yeah. That's it?
Oh, okay.
Yeah, they don't break it down by, unfortunate part is they don't break it down by county or areas that way. So it's kind of a, just thrown all together.
Okay. Any other questions? Go ahead, Councillor Stenhouse.
On staffing. So you have 21 physicians and 22 people working? And yet you still have three vacancies?
It's a doozy.
Come on, put it there, that's a bigger...
They backfilled, so they backfilled positions when people go off. We call it ODS, off-duty sick. Due to the Jago incident from last summer, we had a lot of members go off sick, so they backfilled those positions. So it's almost like you got two people riding in one position because they still maintain that position, but the backfill's gotta take it back on them, so they're an extra member. And then, of course, two with recruits. We could have three recruits. So realistically, we could have, like, it's Spirit River first, since when I was there, it was a sergeant and three constables, so we had three positions. If we had all three that were gonna leave and they proactively sent us three recruits, well, now we've got six on the books when really they're only filling three positions. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, so, good news is, everybody, not everybody, but the majority of our workers are back. Everybody's doing great. They've got themselves looked after, which is huge to me. We have some recruits that are hitting the road on their own now, so that's awesome. And we've got two new ones that just started a week ago, a month ago, and another one coming next week. So the revolving door continues, but we'll make sure they're the best.
Yeah, I just, I called your detachment because we are hoping to see if there might be a way. I had somebody using my name in an email. I don't know how they got it. They sent it around and they were, sent it off to people asking for gift cards, you know? Because I wanted to give them out to doctors and nurses for all of the COVID and stuff. So be careful out there if you get an email from me, yeah. But it's a phishing email out there and hoping that they, you know, maybe the RCP would look into it and try to stop it, but, yeah.
It's, those, the frauds, the scams, especially on the internet, are so, they're so hard because they usually do originate overseas and someone hacks in. And, you know, even the phone calls and that kind of stuff, right? So, I mean, it's that time of the year, right? I don't know, I think I've had about 13 CRA calls that I've got a warrant out for my arrest. I try to talk to them, but they never wanna talk. I don't know why. Weirdest thing. But I saw a new one too. There was, I got one, an email, a text the other day from Alberta Health Services. They're giving me another $100 for getting all three of my shots. I know, that's interesting, and of course, just went far enough that it looks real.
Yeah.
But before I put the deposit, which I'm sure was the other way, I got rid of it. But, yeah, it's, God, it's terrible. It's absolutely terrible, so... But we do have an anti-fraud, an anti-fraud department that we usually do hand out to people because realistically, for High Prairie to investigate, a lot of these calls involves Interpol and all these other agencies that we just don't have the resources to do. So they put together the anti-fraud department. And I'm assuming they knew what they knew. I don't know, so...
All right, any other questions or comments for the commander? No?
Nothing.
Oh. Councillor Yashish?
Not, I guess, a serious question, but did you have anybody go to Ottawa?
We had one. Go to COOTS first, our GIS corporal, Sherry... We had one, go to Coots first, our GIS corporal, Sherry Chu, she's on our, we call it the Poo Unit, it's the Public Order Unit. So she went down to Coots, and when that cleared up, actually, she was just on her way back and they said, no, you're heading to Ottawa. So she went over to Ottawa, and I would assume she's gonna be back shortly, but, yeah, so she went over there for a bit. And that's the only one.
We're gone?
Yeah, yeah. Oh, for sure. We did send another member down to Coots as well, one of our, she just got off her crew training, so she's six months in, and Brandy McDonald, she retired and fit, that she could go down, so she went down and she quite enjoyed it. She said it was a real, I don't think they, I mean, it's such a funny thing to say, I went down and enjoyed a protest and blockades and stuff, but it was just the experience behind it, so, yeah, for sure.
Yeah, absolutely, and you meet a lot of the other departments and agencies and everything that goes with it, so.
Yeah, you really do, because unless you really work close to the hub, you never see the tac units and...
The coordination that goes into something like that?
Yeah, yeah, so, no, a great experience for her.
Oh, great.
Yeah.
All right, I don't see any other questions, so I thank you for coming in.
Thank you for having me.
Like I said, nice report, anytime you wanna come in, please do.
I think, yeah, and we're getting close to the end of the fiscal year, so we'll be doing our new EPP and ULQA. So if somebody could remind me even next month's meeting, I'll come in and we'll look, because last year was crime reduction, community, our communicate effectively and improve traffic safety, that was our three main, main ones last year. If we're happy with those, we can roll them over again, but we can certainly have a discussion if you have other areas you'd like to see looked after.
Sure, well, we have a new council this year, so it'll be an interesting discussion for, for this council to have and talk about those.
Yeah, so food for thought for next one.
Yeah, thank you.
Thanks very much.
All right, so moving on, we've approved our minutes already, we'll move on to item 8.1. And can I get a motion on this to start the discussion?
I will make the motion at Council Director's Administration to bring back the required changes to the council procedure bylaw to reflect that all votes for organizational meetings, regular council meetings, and special council meetings be recorded.
Okay, and I know you brought this one forward, so I'll let you start on why you'd like to see it, and we'll go from there.
Well, I pretty much said it all in the synopsis there, it's complete transparency. And it also, down the road, if somebody was doing something nefarious, there's something to go back on. This was a situation that had arisen in the past, where there was a question whether or not somebody had declared an interest when they should've and they hadn't, and we all knew they hadn't, but votes hadn't been recorded, so there was nothing we could do about it. I just think that people should know how we're voting, and we should be accountable for that. So I, and, you know, is it gonna take a little bit of cooperation on our part? Absolutely, we're gonna have to hold our hand up for an extra second. I don't think this is hard, I don't think this is anything that, I mean, this really shouldn't be a big debate.
All right, Counselor Stenhouse?
So let's debate it. Yeah, I'm not for this. I don't see the purpose behind it. We debate all kinds of topics, and at the end of the day, we come together as a council. But that's the decision council made. To record it, I, I, I don't get the concept. Are, are you afraid of, are, when you're voting, you're voting on behalf of the people who have approached you and the information that you have? So our meetings are recorded, which is open to the public to review them anytime. I've had comments where people said, hey, you know what, I was snooping in a council meeting the other day, and I seen this. The purpose of recording, I don't under, I, I don't get it, I don't get it. It's, it's already open, and like I said, at the end of the day, no matter, we fight for the people who have approached us, and we may lose that battle, but at the end of the day, we come together, and that's council's decision, it's not an individual decision.
Okay, you, you're done?
Yeah.
Okay.
No, he's done, she's finished.
I guess, uh, my question is, and, and maybe the fact that we record these can serve that purpose and address James's request, do we archive the videos?
Uh, yes, we do.
In my mind, that, that is recording, right, what takes place, because the discussion takes place, it's recorded, it's documented, who's for and who's against, and, and we have that. I don't, I don't know if we need to have a duplicate service or not. Got your finger, okay, Counselor Martin's?
Finished, finished. So Counselor Regal, I completely am with you on transparency and accountability, I get the intent of this. But as previously Counselors Stenhouse and Dunn have said, I too was thinking about the recording, and for the matter of conflict, a recorded vote isn't going to solve someone who doesn't declare conflict. I'm thinking of the administration time, I mean, we're already, you know, we've heard from Rod multiple times about the sort of strain there, so that was, that was my question when I wrote my notes. It's not a matter of the patience to hold my hand up, it's more about, again, administration, administration and the, that's a lot to record everything, and some of them are so inconsequential, I mean, yeah, there's some big things that we do, we should have recorded, especially for, you know, to talk to your constituents and your supporters, but you can, you can request a recorded vote at the beginning of that particular debated, heated, you know, thing. So for that reason, I'm, I'm not sure that I would, I would be in favor.
All right. Anybody else on this one? Counselor Yashish?
Um, I too, I look at it the same way, you know, there is recording, it is recorded. I like the idea of the ability to request that, that that be recorded specifically, I wasn't aware of that, so. I, I like that idea in that regard. I, I look at us as a council as a whole, and once a decision's made, the decision's made, as Counselor Stenhouse indicated as well. When I was looking at this previously, that's pretty much the conclusion that I had come to there. It just, it seems like a little bit extra administration work as well there, that I don't know if it's necessarily necessary as well.
Counselor Danakka?
I, I understand what the rest of the council are saying, but from my perspective, it's just one, it's sort of one more way to be transparent, even though it's already recorded, it's archived. I mean, I'm not immune to, to having our votes recorded. And I do agree with Counselor Stenhouse that, and everybody else that's mentioned it, at the end of the day, it, how you vote, whatever is the will of council is, is what we bring forth, whether you agree or disagree, but, I mean, I'm not immune to having the votes recorded.
Okay, I'll put in my two bits, is that, I think we, I agree in that it's a council decision, and one other thing, if it's always recorded, it becomes, well, I voted this, they voted that, as opposed to a council decision, that worries me a little bit. But it is the, the extra time, the extra paper, you know, our minutes now won't be two or three pages, they'll be six or seven, because every time you gotta list them all out, which is, and it takes the time to record it. And I, what I'm hearing is, it was a one-time issue, and it was something where somebody didn't declare pecuniary interest. I mean, pecuniary interest should be recorded when somebody declares in the minutes anyway. So as soon as somebody declares pecuniary interest, it's recorded in the minutes. If they don't declare it, it obviously isn't going in the minutes, so they, they would've been voted on, so if it's, and those minutes have to be approved, so if you come back and somebody sees the minutes and they go, well, you know, I, I declared pecuniary interest and it's not in the minutes, then it should be, those minutes should've been adjusted. So again, for a one-time issue, I don't know if the extra work and paper and everything is, would be worth it from my perspective. All right?
Thank you all thoroughly, you've thoroughly thrashed me, and I'm still not mentally 100%, and I, you know, I'm just not, I... Yeah, you know what, I think we should record everything, and what, was it just a one-time thing? Well, you know what, we have to be held accountable for what we've, what we do and say up here. So, I mean, that's really the idea behind it, being held accountable for what we do. Go ahead, go ahead.
The way I'm looking at it, okay, and I, I don't mean it this way, through the chair. Are you trying to avoid confrontation when your constituents said, did you go in there and fight for me? And it's like, yes, I fought, but I lost, do you know what I'm saying? Like, are you trying to, like...
No, I understand, I understand what you're saying there, I'm just thinking that... God, I'm usually better at this.
Go through the chair.
No, no, like, I'm not, I'm not... I just believe in transparency.
We are transparent.
I believe we truly are transparent. And I'm not ashamed when I go out in public to say that I was against that, I don't believe in that, but that is what council decided. Or vice versa, I'm all for it, but council, I couldn't convince council, so I lost that one, I lost that battle. I'm not, like, that's just me, I'm not ashamed of that. This is where I'm looking at this recorded vote, is saying, oh, I didn't vote that way, no. I'm upfront and honest with everyone, no, I voted against it, but they voted for it, and so this is the will of council.
It's not just a one-time thing, though. Well, and you said the pecuniary interest, it was something that wasn't declared, that should've been. That we couldn't go back and say anything, because it wasn't recorded votes. Now, by the time it became clear that this should've been declared an interest, it was too late. Everything was done. We couldn't go back, there, there was nothing that could be done as far as censuring. Cens- cens- censuring, am I using that word? Thank you. The counselor in question, Municipal Affairs said, yeah, you know what, if you had recorded votes, absolutely, you could've nailed that person to the wall, and we'd be right there with you, you got nothing. Now, we're all right, I think?
Hmm?
We never don't think.
Well, we didn't then.
But we do now.
Yeah, you know what, it's just another la- layer of, it's a safety net. And as far as, you know, the, the paper, I mean, you know, if, if seven hands go up, all in favor, that's easy. If five hands go up, okay, who's opposed, okay, you know, Dunn and White were opposed. D, you know, JD, JW, I don't think we got any double initials in here, no? Like, that to me is a weak argument, saying that it's gonna take extra time. Whatever, we'll call the question.
Okay, uh, all in favor? Opposed? All right, it is, cares, yeah. All right, so we're moving on then to item 8.2, Electrical Vehicle Charging Program, Counselor Stenhouse?
Okay.
Are you making a motion to serve?
I'm making a motion.
Good, good.
The council received a report on grant, on the grant for electric vehicle charging stations for information.
Okay, and start us off.
I will, I will start you off with, oh, I got lots to say and I forgot my notes at home, but we already have two in town that are just overused, constantly plugged in all the time. But that's what we need, is another one owned by the town. Um, I have questions, who's paying for the electricity, how does this work?
I'll let turn that to our CEO.
Your worship, so, yeah, the program is designed to fund not only the machine itself, but the infrastructure to the machine. Council has the ability to do whatever they want to do on the rates, so let's just say we get charged 7.2 cents a kilowatt, whatever it is, and if council decides they wanna 50% markup, you can adjust it however you like. So there's that flexibility within the system. One of the things you may wanna think about, and I understand what you're saying, that there are a couple already in town. I mean, one of the advantages to the program now is that it's 100% reimbursable. One of the positives is you actually have built the infrastructure for the future, so having the cable and the electricity to certain spots, that won't change. The machine itself will change over time, like the charging, you know, the technology's changing rapidly, and so that charging machine itself, that electric box, that will definitely become obsolete over time. But the, all the infrastructure wouldn't, so that's maybe one thing to, one thing to consider.
So my argument about against this is, so this would be somewhere on town property. So these, I believe these charging stations are in the, first of all, in the wrong location to begin with. They should be at restaurants or motels, because who's gonna sit at Peavy Mart for four hours or six hours and charge their vehicle? Where if they were at a motel, where someone's gonna spend the night, that's where they would use these charging stations, or at a restaurant, where they're gonna be there for a couple of hours. To have them, to have a charging station in our parking lot, like, where, where is this gonna be located? I, I can't understand how this charging station, how people are just gonna sit in their vehicle for four hours and charge their vehicle? How location?
Yeah, I, I can appreciate it. One of the things with the technology, it keeps improving and improving. I don't know a lot about electrical vehicles, like, I, I don't, I, I didn't shop with the individual that's doing these grants. And the technology's changing, before it took hours, right? And depending on how much energy draw you can do from your electrical box, depends on what type of charger you can get. There's phase one, two, three, and then, and then there's gonna be a phase four and a phase five. But the, the better ones, like the phase threes, or level threes, they can charge your vehicle in, like, about a half hour. So the, the technology's improving all the time. So, but it also depends on, like, your infrastructure and the availability to do it. Sometimes you don't, I guess they gotta come out, they gotta take a draw from your electrical box, and they see how much power it can put out. And depending on how much power it can put out, depends on how big a machine you can put there. So, I understand what you're saying, though.
And I've also, like, went to a dealership and talked to them about this, and the big thing that's really selling is a hybrid lines, where they're both gas and power, and they don't charge at all. And they don't charge at all. The engine, when they're running on gas, then the battery, there's a generator in there that's charging the batteries. They're not using the plug-in ones. Yeah, even though it's a grant and it's infrastructure, it's still our money. It's still taxpayers' money. It's not, maybe not coming from the town, it's coming from our provincial tax dollars and I can't support that. Well, like, yeah, it's a grant, but we're still wasting money. Wasted. I don't wanna be the town known just to take money and waste it on a, maybe, maybe what, even if we had an electric vehicle in town, like we, who owns an electric vehicle? The dealerships here aren't selling them. And like I said, the hybrids are the ones that are, the dealership is saying that's going. Those don't even need plugins.
Yeah, I'm done. I'm finished.
You're finished, yeah.
I agree totally with Councillor Stenhouse. But if we are gonna get ahead of the game, maybe we need to look at a portable electrical filling station, so that people get stuck halfway down the road can call and get assistance. Just my thought. Anyone else want to?
Oh, yeah. What's that? All right, so the hybrids, some of the hybrids require recharging. Dodge has sold some of those. And the way of the future is the electric vehicle. I believe all three of the domestic outlets there, Chrysler, Ford and Chevy have all said that by twenty thirty-five, they are only going to have electric vehicles. I think twenty thirty-five, that's, that's what they're shooting for. So, I mean, twenty thirty-five, that's not that long. That's only fifteen years in the future. I won't even have old age security by then. Okay, so that's how close that is. This is, yeah, it's a, it's a grant, but upfront, it's not costing us anything as the town. Sure, we need to pick a spot where it's gonna go. Does it have to be in our parking lot? Or, you know, hey, maybe at the sports palace, that might be a helpful place to put it. You know, we just, we have to figure out exactly the right place to put it, so it's maximum usage. Ford has got some hybrids that require recharging, and they've also got a lineup of electric stuff. And you're right, right now, the batteries, eh, you can't go to Edmonton right now when it's thirty below on a charge because it's cold. But it would be nice if there's somebody trying to do it and they get here and they're like, well, Jesus, I need to charge up. Hey, you can charge up here and we'll be ahead of the curve. There's the, I think there's two at the post office. Uh, there's a couple over at Big Lakes Dodge because they had to have them, because they're starting to sell these things. I just think that having these things available in our town is showing that we're progressive towards the future. I think there's always gonna be a place for, for the internal combustion engine and diesel engines and all that kind of stuff. But for passenger vehicles, everything that we're gonna be driving within twenty years is gonna be electrical. And I'd like to be able to point at something to my kids and grandkids and say, yeah, we got that for nothing because we were looking forward. You know what? You pay for, you can set something up that, you know, when it gets to the point where it's costing a bunch of money. Cause you're right, you know what? Initially, there's not gonna be a lot of draw of that. But ultimately, there will be some sort of token system or, you know, swipe your card in there, charge up for forty-five minutes or whatever it's gonna take to get you to a full, full charge. I, I think that passing up on, on a grant like this, especially something like this that is looking forward to the future, I think that's foolish because we don't wanna be caught in the stone age here. Cause ultimately, that's what we're headed towards if we stay without the infrastructure and get everything set up, you know, and you're right, you know what, at the, here, eh, sports palace? Yeah, hockey game takes a couple hours. That's a good place to put one. Or at least have everything plumbed in so that, yeah, we get this one for free. And you know, yeah, there's gonna be that one crazy hippie that goes out and buys that first electric vehicle. Good for them. Congratulations. Here's a place you can charge up. Like I said, in fifteen years, the domestics at least, they're all gonna be fully electric. That's the plan. And even if they're not fully electric, they're gonna be mostly electric. So I, I say take advantage of, of a grant that, you know, isn't coming out of our coffers.
Anyone else? Councillor Yashishin.
Uh, I guess I too was looking at the future and looking that we're progressive, you know, that we're showing we're progressive. What worried me was that we would go with something like this and then it had to upgrade it immediately, like within six months cause something's changed, cause things are changing so fast. So I wasn't really, um, I didn't have a whole lot of information on that part of it. I would be more opposed if this is gonna be something that's gonna start costing us money. So, um, and then again, from taxpayers and, you know, I don't think we're in a position right now or where the world is at the moment to be doing that. But I do like that idea of looking forward and, and showing we are progressive in that regard. And I do believe we have two in town. Oh, is there three? Oh, sorry, I mean, uh, electric vehicles. I believe there's two.
Yeah, I talked to Kelly today, there's a few. Fifty years ago, absolutely.
Councillor, I'll get Councillor Martin, cause she hasn't had a chance to speak yet.
So my initial questions for Rod were going to be, so let me, let me preface this by saying is, I don't think that we're seeing the total cost of ownership here, you know? Yes, they're paying for the unit today. I do believe it'll be obsolete. And I don't think that that, that cost reflects the, the maintenance and other things. So I was gonna ask Rod if he had any sort of idea. That was one of my questions. Secondly, this isn't even a matter about being progressive. If we were a council in Vancouver, this would not even be a debate. We are north central Alberta. I went to a Tesla dealership in Calgary and I spent a lot of time looking and plugging in coordinates to go from Calgary to Edmonton. Here at the sports place, I'd be lucky if I could go to Slave Lake on a charge. We, we have minus thirty temperatures. I mean, this is the, the two or three vehicles running around. Maybe they do little rounds in High Prairie and you're not, you're gonna be hard pressed to go to Canusa. I mean, in, on a winter day, um, the, the warmth of a vehicle, I mean, these charges don't, don't last. And I looked, I mean, those Teslas were very exciting there. They're just, people forget they were northern Alberta. In fact, the gentleman at the Calgary Tesla dealership said that this is not a hot market point. In Toronto, G T A, Vancouver, California, northern Alberta, not so much. Maybe things will change in ten or fifteen years, and I do believe that this sort of incentive will come around. Today, I don't know that it makes sense for us. Five, ten years with different kind of technology and, and they can keep me warm at minus thirty, I'd be, I'd be open to look, to look at it. I think we're, I think that those three that exist already, we're gonna have to do some major maintenance and shifts to get it up to, up to code in ten, fifteen years because I don't, I, I think that we're going to spend needlessly, and it's not because I don't wanna be progressive or that I'm not for electric, electric vehicles. I just think that we have to look at where we are located and this isn't, and I also don't believe that this is reflective of the total cost of ownership of this entire system. And so I, I would be open to request to accept it for information at this time.
Councillor Dunn?
So I, along the same lines, I was going to just talk about risk management and the impact of having something that isn't being utilized in your community at a great, you know, as well than looking globally at the risk involved. You know, nobody thought that we would be here in this air, air, you know, where we're looking at bringing in electric vehicles because it didn't make sense. There's a reason it didn't make sense. One is the weather, one is distance and plugging in and charging. And there's, there's things that are happening around the world. I would, I would prefer, I, you know what? In terms of bringing one in, we can do it, but there's a good possibility that we're gonna lose money, right? And the reality is, is we don't know fifteen years from now if this is still gonna be a thing. They're looking at all other kinds of motors and everything else. And, and to be honest, the electric vehicle is, is not that great. There's other things that can motorize or can move vehicles for a longer pace and at a different rate than electric vehicles. So I'm just, those are just some of my reading, looking at global stuff. We might wanna check that out first.
Okay. Councillor Danak?
From, from everything that I've been reading and stuff, again, I reiterate everything that Councillor Martin said. We're in northern Alberta. When it's forty below or thirty below, you'd be lucky if you get a charge from here to Anilda. At this point, I don't see the practicality of it. Down the line, maybe, but at this point, I'm really not in favor of it. Even though it is a grant, I mean, we could apply, we could not get it, whatever. But the practicality of it in northern Alberta for six months that were in winter, I just, I, I, I don't, I don't see the need to have, to, to, to invest in, in having one at this point.
All right, uh, my thoughts are I'm, I'm more in lines with Councillor Wychell in that we get a grant, why would we not do this? It's, it's not costing our ratepayers anything. It gives our community another resource that they would have in there. We don't know, well, I don't know where the electrical vehicle situation's heading, right? Like, I mean, you hear lots of things are going to it. I've heard of other technologies that might take it over. But there's no cost to this. If it does, doesn't take off, we haven't lost anything. We can pull that out and we haven't lost anything. If it does take off and we have to upgrade it, we can upgrade it. We can build in costs to make sure that we cover, you know, the, the upgrades that we need to it. So for me, uh, this is, this is easy, getting something for free. Why would you not do it, right? That's, that's the way I look at it is let's get it in here. I know Rod has said, he's had people call to town and say, where can I go to get charged? And, and we now have some more places in town where you can get a charge. But coming to the town, they can come in here, park, go do some shopping. Maybe it'll get some more people in our downtown core while it's shopping. It's, yeah, to me, we should do it. But interesting debates though. That's why we're here. Okay, Councillor Martin's.
Not to beat a dead horse, but I don't think it's free. I think that it's the illusion of free. I don't think it's free. I think that there is, there is a total cost of ownership that we're not looking at, number one. And I hate to say it this way, but the town of High Prairie isn't a high-income town. These are expensive vehicles. I don't see anybody in our town of High Prairie going out to buy an electric vehicle unless you're at the top echelon of socioeconomic status. This is, I've looked at the cost of these vehicles. They're not, they're not something that is, you know, they're just, they're just unaffordable. And they're not even drive-worthy in our, again, if we were in Vancouver, the G T A maybe. But it's, it's taking on something that I don't believe is free. That, that's my only point here.
Okay, well, we can go around on it. I don't know if we're, so we'll, we'll bring this to an end and, and vote on it. So we had a, the motion was to receive for information. All in favor? Opposed? Okay, that motion is carried. All right, moving on to item eight point three, the fee bylaw amendment. Can I get a motion on this?
I'll make the motion. Councillor give, make sure I'm on the right page here. Uh, Councillor give first reading to bylaw zero three dash two zero two two to amend the fee by law zero one two zero two two. This twenty-second day of February twenty twenty-two.
Yeah.
Right?
All right, uh, thank you for the motion. Any questions on this one? Any debate? I am seeing none. All in favor? That is carried. Somebody like to do second reading? Councillor Dunn?
The Councillor give second reading to bylaw zero three dash two zero two two to amend the fees by law zero one dash zero two zero two two. This twenty-second day of February two thousand twenty-two.
You did that on purpose.
That's right, yeah. All right. Any debate at this time? Seeing none, all in favor? Carried. I'll make the motion that council give unanimous consent to proceed to third and final reading of bylaw zero three twenty twenty-two to amend fees by law zero one twenty twenty-two. This the twenty-second day of February twenty twenty-two. All right, all in favor? All right, so that somebody can bring it home. All right. Councillor Yashishin? Okay, Councillor Stenhouse.
The council give third reading to bylaw zero three dash two zero two two to amend the fees by law zero one dash two zero two two. This twenty-second day of February two thousand and twenty-two.
All right, good job. All in favor? Carried. All right, um, so moving on then to our staff and C E O written a report. Can I get a motion to start this? Councillor Stenhouse?
That council receive the C E O Rod Rizlin's report and action list for information.
Okay, I'll turn it over to our C E O if there's anything he wants to add or elaborate on.
Uh, thank you, your worship. I think, I guess the highlight is dealing with the students from Grant McQ. And we've had a couple of meetings with the, those enthusiastic students and looking forward to seeing what they can put together and hopefully upgrade or update one of our very, very old policies. And that would be the surplus equipment. And I think we talked about that once before because it's talking about committees that aren't really even in existence, et cetera. So it's, be good to see if we can update that and have some debate around it and something that will actually work. Like that's the, I guess that was the one highlight I wanted to bring up.
All right, Councillor Stenhouse?
Ready for this one? What, what's its number? Two, six, zero, dash, two, one. Regular council meeting, July thirteenth, two thousand twenty-one. Moved by Councillor Long that administration review the fee structure associated with unpaid dog licenses in the animal control bylaw. I think we need to put a rush order on this. As I've heard many comments of people who have received fines and late dog license bills. And I do not want a repeat of a two to four thousand dollar bill going out to feed dogs.
Uh, your worship, so I, I can assure you, I can assure you that there's not gonna be that same occurrence that occurred last year. I can say that the, that the draft was just completed on the weekend. It was sent out circulation to our peace officers. So I think we're really close to bring that to the, the bylaw committee. So it's in its final stages. I apologize for the lateness on it. Um, but we will not be, did this go around? We actually, uh, I think all those that didn't receive, uh, or all those that didn't pay, like, we even attempted to call the, the vast majority of them. And did issue tickets last week or the week before, um, and it was that, that's the fifty-dollar ticket. So we're not gonna be going to the extent that we did, uh, last year.
So we were gonna max out at fifty dollars?
No, I think even last year when there was a lot of discussion, I think people were okay. Uh, as you may recall that incident. We actually did go to that's, went to about half. So there's, the next one goes to a hu- a hundred, from fifty to a hundred.
As, as long as we have your word, it's recorded, that they're not gonna get a two to four thousand dollar bill.
That's not gonna happen.
Okay, other ones? Councillor Danaka?
So just to continue the debate on this one. So if somebody has a dog and they don't pay their fine or their license for fifty bucks, then they get a, a ticket for a hundred bucks. So if they pay that hundred bucks, does that mean they now paid for the lifetime of their dog?
Now, so the, the renewals for the dog licenses went out and that was beginning in January, again, December, and that was, uh, it's thirty dollars. And they had basically thirty days to pay and I would think it was about a week or two weeks ago. Um, a few tickets were issued to those that did not pay and that was a fifty-dollar ticket. So if somebody wanted to pay now, they have to pay the fifty-dollar ticket plus the thirty-five do- or the thirty-dollar dog license itself. So the fines that are applied are on top of that license that they still require. One of the things that we are promoting, um, and I hear this stuff all the time. You do an annual, it's thirty. If you do a lifetime, it's a hundred. And so we're really trying to promote that and also reduces red tape, helps people probably money savings down the road. Plus a lot less, I guess, labor and monitoring on our side as well, so. There's some motivation there for people to come in and, and, and get licensed. That's what we're trying to promote.
Yeah, just related to that topic, I know, uh, well, I shouldn't say I know. I, I've heard that there was people saying, oh, I didn't get my notice in the mail and then I, you know, all of a sudden I got the bill. That was sort of the, the postings on social media. So are we assured that those, uh, letters went out? That, that would be my question, that we're confident that they went out to all of the owners?
If they got the bill, they got the.
Well, I, I, I'm just saying what was said out there. I, I, I don't know. I just wanna make sure that we're confident on it, cuz sometimes mistakes have been made.
Yeah, but I mean, let's, let's think about this for a second. I got the bill, I got, I got, I got the fine, but I didn't get the bill. Think about that for a second.
I, I got, I understand.
Cuz there's never been a lie on the internet.
No, no, I know. I just, that's, I agree with you. I just wanna make sure that everything was sent out and we're confident with that. Because if they come up to us, then we can say, no, we know it was sent. It's like, I, I've been a teacher for a long time and then, you know, you get this, oh, I lost my homework or I did, yeah. I know, you get a lot of them. Or no, I didn't know that that assignment was due, even though you sent them emails about it or whatever. I, I.
Karen, I've heard it all, oh, I'm sorry, Brian.
Okay.
Well, just, I wanna comment on that about are we sure the letters were sent out? Uh, can't the pet owners take responsibility and know that they have to renew their own dog license?
Your driver's, uh,
Exactly.
Your plates, your registration, nobody reminds you anymore.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Like, uh, I'm just playing devil's advocate here, but.
Councillor Yashish? All right, sorry, councillor Martins, sorry.
Are we done with the debate on this?
Yeah.
Okay, um, so this is a separate question, Rod. I don't see anything here, but I'm going to ask. And I don't have dates based on what the Alberta government has put out, but I saw, I thought I saw something about with, you know, the end of work from home. Is, is that going to apply to the town of High Prairie and, um, our staff here?
Yes, as soon as that mandate's lifted right now, um, the same in stage two and they're projected to occur on March first. So that's what's posted on the site, um. So when it's announced, that working from home legislation or that working from home, um, I guess mandate is, will be removed.
And the doors will be unlocked.
That's correct.
Okay, anything else? Uh, I'm just wondering about the legal issues with tax collections and the discussions with Canadian fibre, if there's any updates there. Those are two questions I have.
I, on the tax collections, it's looking less and less likely that we're gonna recoup those, those funds, unfortunately. Yeah, some paperwork came in from one of the entities which, um, which we really, we asked for probably six months ago and unfortunately wasn't provided to us. When you start using a lawyer and different letters kind of start flowing through the system, then this paperwork shows up, which is unfortunate because it costs us money to get to that stage. Uh, but it's looking less and less likely that we'll be able to collect on some of those, those taxes. Uh, with regards to, uh, Canadian fibre, I think I've had two, two discussions with them the past, uh, week. Um, what is, was with regards to the permits because basically we have, uh, the drawings, or they have the drawings, um, basically complete. And the only other thing that we're working on is, um, is just how to, um, proceed with the, the funding and the, with the grants.
Okay. All right, anything else? No? All right, we had a motion to receive for information. All in favor? That is carried. So moving on then, we've covered fourteen point one. Um, fourteen, no, fourteen point two, we didn't cover, right? We, that wasn't one that we wanted to cover? Or did somebody wanna talk on that?
No, we were gonna talk about that.
Oh, we were? Oh, it was councillor Stenhouse that mentioned that one, wasn't it? Or was it councillor Martins? Okay.
Four, I think it's fourteen point three.
It's fourteen point three, not two.
Oh, not two, okay. So two, we've, we've, well, okay.
So actually it was fourteen point one, uh, so you, you'd have to receive that for information. Fourteen point one is part of the delegation.
Yeah.
So CNET that was selected to talk about, you'd have to receive that one for information. And then fourteen point three was also, or seventeen point three, fourteen point three was the other one you were gonna talk about. So you've gotta do both those.
Oh, okay, so let's make a motion on fourteen one then.
Fourteen one for information.
Okay, all in favor? Carried, uh, moving on to fourteen three, uh, can get a motion on this one?
I'll make the motion that we receive for information.
Okay, and, uh, with that. Well, let's, uh, we'll open it up for discussion on this one. And councillor Martins, I know, I think this was the one that you had there, so I'll let you start us off.
I was just curious what action was required from us besides receiving for information. I saw councillor Stenhouse's note on this, um, but it seems like there's no real, I think that someone wants to sign here, right? Yeah, no, I had, my only question was what was required of us to do.
In here, what they wanted was, uh, a motion from council, uh, to send a text supporting this bill. Saying on behalf of, you know, uh, twenty-five hundred residents or twenty-three hundred and eighty residents now, uh, that, uh, town of High Prairie endorses the, the members' bill, seat twenty-nine, or two twenty-nine. That was what they were requesting. Councillor Dunn?
I, uh, I, I, I don't know if this is where, this is the, uh, place to bring this up, but I will, I, I'm willing to support this bill, however I am not willing to support it as written. I will not support a bill that states that the convoy for freedom, uh, witnessed hateful and genified genocidal displays because those were obviously plants from somewhere else and as quickly as they were identified, they were removed. And, and so that cannot be blazed, blamed on the con- convoy for freedom. It needs to be blamed on whoever was responsible and nobody has identified that. Funny how that happens. So they remove that paragraph, I'm good with this, but if not, I will not vote in favor of it.
Okay, yeah, like their argument, like the idea of banning hate or banning symbols of hatred, you're okay with, but not the justification, just tying it to the freedom convoy.
Exactly, when you identify something like that, that's, no.
Go ahead, councillor Winkle.
Yeah, banning si- symbols of hatred, I get it. It's a good thing, but the way this is written right now.
It's a symbol of hatred.
Well, it's the, uh, the way this is written right now is you can't watch the Duke's Hazard anymore. Right? I mean, cuz they got the, they got the Confederate flag on top of the General League. So the way this is written, you can't have that. Banning the Nazi flag, well, you know what? Germany does a pretty good job with that. You know, you are not allowed to have any Nazi paraphernalia. All that crap is in a museum and it's explained. Um, yeah, this is just, I get the intent behind it. It's just, it's a slippery slope. I don't wanna go down there. That's why I'm saying just receive it for information.
All right.
Can I add to that? Because, cuz, because in actuality, what took place in the past two weeks was people that were identified to protect and, and serve and, and bring peace, literally identified the Canadian flag as a symbol of terrorism, as a symbol of, um, what, what did they call them? You know, misogynist and racist and everything else. So I agree with James. When you start doing stuff like that, it, it goes down a slippery, slippery slope. And being a person of faith, when is a cross gonna end up being, uh, and a symbol of terrorism? When is, you know, a- any of those things that we see as our, um, as things that describe us and that we have value, when do they become symbols of terrorism? So I, I know that there's stuff out there, but at the same time, very conscientious of, especially given the last three weeks of how easy it is to slide into something else, so.
All right, uh, I see nobody else up with, with their hand, so we had a motion to receive for information. All in favor? It is carried. Uh, moving on then to our written and verbal reports. And/or. And we'll start off with councillor Danaka.
Finally had a, a museum meeting. It's been canceled due to COVID and weather and et cetera. Um, just a few highlights. The, uh, casino license has been completed and sent out. The museum's casino is June twenty-second and twenty-third. Um, the other issue is, um, the AGM is set for April twenty-first at six, always looking for new members. Um, Darlene is, is, uh, working with Mike to get the museum sign installed as well as Rick from the Sports Palace to pick up the sesquicentennial mural and put it over at the, uh, Gordon Buchanan Center. She's still working on having quotes, contractors come in and give quotes on the issues that you and her have discussed regarding fixes that need to be done at the museum. Uh, the first quarter grant from the town has been received. Um, Darlene had applied to Big Lakes County for a capital grant for new display cabinets. They approved that for the amount of forty-five hundred dollars. Um, what else? Uh, due to, um, some recent medical issues, uh, the chair, Linda Coesvelt, has resigned her position. Um, Chris is the chair for now until the AGM. And, um, I move my verbal report for information.
Okay, any questions or comments for councillor Danaka?
Go ahead.
Not really anything to do with your report now, but is Darlene gonna be doing the framing again at the museum once, uh, COVID crap is done?
Probably not because, uh, the costs of getting frames and glass and has skyrocketed to like five hundred percent more than it was. And as well, unless something happens or changes with the supply chain of getting any of that stuff. So at this point, she will not be resuming unless something changes.
Okay, well, we have a report for information. All in favor? Carried. Councillor Dunn? All right, councillors, councillor Martins?
I also do not have the report.
All right, uh, over. Okay, over to me, um. Let's see, since the last council meeting, we had, uh, was requested to meet with administration and one of the residents on a flooded garage. I know, uh, those that were on council before, we, we've had that person come in and talk to our council and this was a continuation and they're still not satisfied. And end result is, oh, the town's gonna work and try to drain the, the water better from the, the alley as best we can.
Which alley?
Back alley. Yeah. Uh, there is a, I attended the, sort of the ribbon cutting for the dialysis unit. And afterwards had the opportunity to chat with, uh, MLA Rain to, uh, get him to lobby for the old hospital for us on, on that account. Um, had a Hart River Housing Meeting. The Pleasantview Lodge, uh, construction's going good. It's on, on schedule. There's still arguing on some, some of the smaller details, but it's, it's moving along good, which is, which is good. The, uh, Fox Creek Project ended up, uh, they re-tendered it. The price came in lower. Uh, and they started already, like, because they had to get going to get that, uh, Rapid Housing Grant. Uh, when they re-tendered it and got the, right, within the right price range, they started, uh, two days later. So there was no, uh, time wasted on that. Uh, we've been notified, the government, uh, the province is looking at some new. is looking at some new social housing, where they're hoping that the housing management bodies will take over the properties and maintain them and run them, which for somebody like Heart River Housing and the housing units that we have that are quite old, Heart River Housing doesn't wanna take over fifty-year-old houses and all the maintenance and stuff that's required on them. So I don't know what's gonna happen with that. They're hoping that they're gonna get a lot of, for new social housing, they think they'll get a lot of new social housing built when they're gonna partner with private enterprise, the government and the management bodies. But we don't have a lot of private people, investors wanting to build homes up here for social housing. So I'm not sure, like, the, the plans that the government has might work better in a bigger city, but it won't work well, in my opinion, in our, in our small, little northern rural town. So those are the meetings I attended. And I did have, I just wanted to, I know we have that Dr. Muir's information session tomorrow. Just wondering if anybody knows who that's went out to? Did everybody on council get an invite? Did it get out to the public?
I, I think it, I think it's gone out to a fair amount of people, because I was talking to Chris, he got the invite, so I'm assuming it went out to multiple stakeholders, possibly.
Oh, okay. Well, hopefully we can get, you know, a good cross-section of the town to give the perspective of what our town would want. Because I know, I, he did phone me and was giving me his perspective, and I said, well, you know what? Our town wants another doctor. They're fine with another doctor, and let's, so let's get it in here. And he said, well, there's this reason, this reason. But, and that's what he wants, to give his reasons, and, you know, there are some reasons there, but, so.
Yeah, well.
The other thing that we needed to, to finalize, I think, is the, our special meeting date. I know we had planned for this Saturday, and then not everybody could be there, so we planned, we're trying for another date, and it's been going back and forth. So maybe while we're doing this, we can nail down another date and time where we can, hopefully, everybody can be there. That would be the best to get through it. But let's go from there. And Rod, I'll maybe turn it over to Rod. Where are we at now? Because I know you've been trying to find another date, and I'm not sure where we're at.
I think we're actually at zero. I think, like, all the dates that, people said they were available two or three weeks ago, or two weeks ago, I don't think there's one that we don't have issues with.
Oh, okay.
So when we did do the whole survey last go-around, we thought we had, well, it was like about eight dates.
Yeah, because we gave some for the school division there, right?
Yeah, so, yeah. So there's probably some more dates available, but all those dates, no dice.
Okay.
So I don't know if we wanna wait till after the meeting and do that.
Okay, we can, we can do that after the meeting, and nail that down. Okay, so with that, I'll move my report for information. But yeah, you can ask questions.
So going back to your, to the AHS community engagement tomorrow, are we just individually not, you know, individually, okay?
Resume any from whom?
Yeah.
Yeah. Counselor Danaka?
Just a couple things. When you had your chance to speak to M.L.A. Rain, did he, did you bring up Dr. Lachlan's clinic?
Yes, and he, he knows about it, and he said, you know, AHS is working on it. And to add to that, I know we had requested a meeting with the Minister of Health. Their contact said it's not gonna happen until after the budget.
Which is tomorrow.
That, well, that's tomorrow. They announced the budget. They had the speech from the throne today, and then tomorrow's the budget. So maybe after that, but he says they're, they're so busy right now, they can't, there's no way it was gonna happen.
Okay. My next question is in regards to Heart River Housing. Did they, did they finalize their budget?
For, for twenty-twenty-two?
Yes.
Yeah, they finalized it long ago.
Okay. Do you know if they gave their people a cola?
Yes.
Did you, when you, when you were at their meetings regarding the budget, did you say we wanna toe the line, did la, 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 la?
Uh, when, I'm trying to remember, because that was back in October-ish, October, November? I can't honestly remember. I know there, there was a lot of discussion going back and forth on it, whether we should, whether we shouldn't, and if we did, how much.
So what was the end result?
The end result was, they got a cola, and I can't remember the percentage. I think, I think it was two. I think it was two, but I'm not sure. I'd have to go back and look. Nope? All in favor, receiving my report? Good. Counselor Sinhouse?
I have no report. I have some really good information that I left at home, so I'll present it at our next meeting.
Okay. Counselor Winkle?
You'd think I wouldn't have anything, but, first off, I wanna apologize for missing the last couple meetings. I don't wish the sickness that I had to miss the first one on anybody, and losing your mother is worse than that. So thank you for, for your understanding there. Thank you to the staff. They sent a card and a gift certificate to Mom's favorite restaurant. She would have appreciated that. That, yeah, that, that helped. That meant a lot. Let's see, so library thanks, to make sure their thanks was passed on. For the budget, they've purchased a cocoon chair. This is like a sensory deprivation kind of thing. It eliminates the outside noise. So if, I mean, if you just need like a super quiet place to do some studying, you can sit in this thing, or if you've got the ADHD and, and you just, you need to calm down, that's really, they're good. They expect that in the next ten days or so, is what they'd said there. And, and the Red Wings have two home games left. It'd be great to see everybody out there. They lost a game, so they're not perfect anymore. But yeah, they, two, two home games left in the regular season, and then playoffs start. The games have been fairly well-attended, and it's good hockey. Come check it out. That is my, I think I got everything. Yep, that's, that's everything. I moved my report for information.
Okay. Counselor Dunn? Nope, questions? He had a question? Okay, questions first, and then we'll vote.
How does one sanitize that cocoon chair? I know what they're like, because I, I've been in one of them at Google way back when, and they're difficult to, that was way before COVID. How does one sanitize that thing?
No idea.
They're, they're beautiful. They're like a, they call them nap pods, and they're dark, and you have little headphones, and they're literally like an egg.
You can pair your phone in it and everything, yeah. I, I don't know how you would sanitize that, and in six days, it won't matter anymore.
Okay, any other questions? No, he moved his report. All in favor? Carried. And Counselor Ishishin?
I have no report.
All right. All right, we'll take, we have, we do have one confidential item that we, so we'll take a break, and we'll come back, go into a closed session, and go from there.